We're gonna just check to make sure the commissioners are on the line. Commissioner Walker? Commissioner Kelly? Oops.
Commissioner Walker?
Okay, let's try again. Commissioner Walker?
Commissioner Kelly?
Commissioner Kelly, are you there?
The following five participants are in the conference.
Thank you.
Commissioner Alexander?
Brad Neal.
Okay, let's just try to make sure that the commissioners are online. I have Commissioner Walker? Commissioner Kelly? Are you there? Commissioner Neal?
It's a flag of the United States.
Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Alexander?
Present.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Kelly, are you there? And Commissioner Walker, are you there?
Here.
Okay, so we have... Go ahead and...
We have a quorum?
Yeah.
We'll get started here in just a moment. As Mojave County continues to address the COVID-19 and the risk it presents in our community, remind those presentants to keep social distancing in mind as we go through this meeting today, please. This will be our third Planning and Zoning Commission meeting where commissioners are joining us via telephone. Commissioners, please remember to say your name prior to comments or questions. Also, after each speaker, I will call on each commissioner to ask if they have any questions or comments. After the public hearing is closed, I also call on each commissioner to state their comments. With that, we'll call the June 10th, 2020 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag...
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Walker? Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Neal?
Here.
Commissioner Abbott?
Here.
Commissioner Morse?
Here, telephonically.
Commissioner Jacks?
Here.
Commissioner Martin?
Here.
Commissioner Alexander?
Here.
Commissioner Gillette? We have a quorum.
Our automated announcement, please.
Anyone who has not signed in, please do so at the table located in the lobby. Should anyone wish to speak, please complete a request to speak form, which is also located on the lobby table next to the sign-in sheet. A request to speak form must be completed for each item you would like to speak on. Please note, there are stairs on the right, left, and center aisles, and we ask that you use caution when using the stairs. There is also a ramp located to the audience's left. If anyone has written comments, exhibits, petitions, photos, or letters they intend to present at today's meeting, have 17 copies and give them to a staff member at the back of the auditorium. Staff member, please hold up your hand for the audience. If you do not have 17 copies, you may use the overhead camera to present your documents. Please place your documents on the podium and line it up with the arrows indicated. If you want your documentation to go on record, you must hand them to the clerk after your presentation with the agenda item number clearly marked on the documentation. Members of the public cannot speak to staff members that are seated at the tables with microphones during the meeting. If you have questions, please see the staff member located in the back of the auditorium. All speakers will be limited to two minutes to make their presentation statements. Everyone, please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate during the meeting. If you must take a call, please leave the meeting area and go outside to have your conversation. We also ask the audience to refrain from talking with one another during the presentations and discussions. Today, the Planning and Zoning Commission will hear public testimony and then forward a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Everyone attending the meeting is asked to remember that the administrative building and campus are tobacco-free areas, which means no smoking is allowed from curb to curb. No food or drinks are allowed in the auditorium except for bottled water. If there are any items remaining on the agenda, the Commission will break for lunch for one hour per the chairman's discretion.
Moving on to item number five. Need a motion to approve the minute... I'm sorry. Need a motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 13th, 2020?
I'll make a motion to approve for staff recommendation, or just make a motion to approve the minutes.
Got a motion by Commissioner Abbott looking for a second?
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Gillette. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moves us on to item one.
Item one is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor Parcel Number 306-20233A from an R140M single-family residential 40,000 square foot minimum lot size to an AR agricultural residential zone to allow for an RV as a temporary residence in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions. Additionally, a permitted waiver of lot size shall be obtained prior to applying for any permits.
My understanding is the applicant is available by phone should the commissioners have any questions. Do I have anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to this item? I'll make a roll call and ask commissioners if they have any questions or comments. Commissioner Abbott?
No question.
Commissioner Alexander? Commissioner Gillette?
No questions.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Morse? Commissioner Martin? Commissioner Neal? And Commissioner Walker? Hearing no questions, I will ask for a motion on item number one.
I make a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations.
A motion by Commissioner Gillette looking for a second?
Second motion.
Second by Commissioner Abbott. I'll take a roll call. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Abbott?
Aye.
Commissioner Alexander? Commissioner Gillette?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes, I do have a question.
Commissioner Neal?
No.
Commissioner Walker? Are there any opposed?
Yes, Commissioner Martin.
We have one opposed. Motion carries. Did you get item one okay? Okay. Moves us on to item number two.
Item number two is an evaluation of a request for a renewal of a special use permit on Assessor Parcel Numbers 30603205A and 205B for a dog breeding kennel in an AR agricultural residential zone in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends this request for the seventh renewal of the special use permit to be approved without expiration and standard conditions.
Is the applicant present? Do you wish to speak on the item? Please give us your name and address.
Bridget Sharp, 3564 North Araby Road, Golden Valley.
Thank you. Any discussion on the item?
This is my 16th year. We've lived in the same area for 25 years. I raised my family there, you know?
Okay.
Just, I love what I do.
I'll ask if any of our commissioners have any questions or comments on this particular item while you're up there. Commissioner Abbott?
No, I just have a comment. A good comment for you that you've got it approved for several years now, and I'm glad to see they've got it on here for... Without expiration.
Yeah, it was supposed to.
You don't have to come back before us, I guess.
Yeah, I hope not. That was what was recommended last year, but it didn't happen, and I was really disappointed. So, I mean, I've had my two environmental checks the past two years since. They always pass. I've never had any issues, so...
Very good.
Thank you.
Commissioner Alexander? Commissioner Gillette?
No questions.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Morse?
No questions.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes, I would like to see this maybe an extended permit for possibly four years instead of just a blank on-site permit, so... Because if we... My problem is if there are... We just render our rights to enforce any kind of incident that may arise in the future.
Comment to that?
Well, I get inspected every year, surprise inspections. I'm limited to 15 dogs or under, and 16 years, I've always abided by that. So, yeah.
So, with the approval of an ongoing permit, does that hold the applicant to continued inspections?
Yes, through environmental health every year. I have to renew my permit.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
If I may speak. So, the special use permit that we are renewing would... It's for the use itself, so the property can be used as a kennel, and that's what we're proposing, that they extend indefinitely so that we... The use of the property can be used as a kennel. They will still have the yearly inspections from environmental quality or environmental health. Also, if there are issues that arise, such as a code enforcement case, then we could still go and enforce our codes in that sense, as well as if there is any dog or animal abuse, then we would also be able to shut down the kennel as well.
That will never happen.
Okay.
As never and never will.
Okay, but thank you. That answered my question. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Neal, any comments?
No.
Commissioner Walker? Okay, I will call for a motion on item two. Any motion from Commissioner for item number two?
I'll make a motion to approve for staff recommendation.
I second.
Commissioner Abbott makes a motion. Commissioner Gillette seconds it. All in favor, I'll do a roll call. Commissioner Abbott?
Approved.
Commissioner Alexander?
Approved.
Commissioner Gillette?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Morse?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Approved.
Commissioner Neal?
Approved.
And Commissioner Walker. Motion carries. Item three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor Parcel Numbers 30111098 and 023 from an AR 3A agricultural residential three-acre minimum lot size zone and an AR 10A agricultural residential 10-acre minimum lot size to an AR agricultural residential zone to bring into compliance and to allow for a minor land division in the Golden Valley vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
I understand the applicant is here. Kathleen Tackett Hicks? You care to speak on the item? All right, we'll see if our commissioners have any questions at this time. Commissioner Abbott?
I have no question.
Commissioner Alexander?
No questions.
Commissioner Gillette?
No questions.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Morse?
No questions.
Commissioner Martin?
No questions.
Commissioner Neal?
No questions.
And Commissioner Walker? We have any other speakers on that item? Seeing none, the chair will now call for a motion, looking for a motion on item three.
I'll make a motion to approve for staff recommendation.
Second.
Got a motion by Commissioner Abbott and a second by Commissioner Gillette. All those in favor, I'll do a roll call. Commissioner Abbott?
Aye.
Commissioner Alexander?
Aye.
Commissioner Gillette?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Morse?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Neal?
Aye.
And Commissioner Walker. Motion passes. Moving on to item number four.
Item number four is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of Assessor's Parcel Numbers 31361072C, 072D, 072E, and 072F from an AR 36A agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 5A agricultural residential minimum acre five lot size to an AR 20A agricultural residential 20-acre minimum lot size zone to bring into compliance in the Hackberry vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions. We received three letters of opposition.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant present? Would you care to speak on the item, sir? No?
I couldn't hear it.
Oh, would you care to speak on the item?
Not really, not after any major questions.
Okay, thank you. We do have two individuals that would like to speak on the item. First, I have Rodney Kindland. Please come forward. And if you'd give us your name and address, please.
Rodney Kindland, 9687 East El Norte Street, Hackberry 86411.
Thank you.
The thing I take issue with today is the way this has all come about. Channel Land Trust moved ahead, placed a mobile home on the acreage, put in a waterline, opened and abandoned a road, all without permits. That road was abandoned. As per the map that you all sent us, it says 60-foot roadway abandoned. And one of the neighbors did call the planning office, and they said, "No, it's not. It's not abandoned. Our maps show it's not abandoned." If that's the case, somebody's sending us erroneous information, or you're using the wrong information for what you're doing. I called the county planning office, or first the office that issues building permits, and asked if a permit was pulled, if it was needed, for waterline and a road, and they said no. Then, they all... They referred me to the planning department. I called them, and Planning and Development said, "They don't know, but they didn't think any permits are needed either." It seems that before any construction is done, if I were to build a new house, I'd have to get permits for the sewer and at least for electric... For the electrical wiring. I don't know why no permits were needed in this case. The Channel Land Trust took down the gate that was blocking off the cemented road and removed the fence and put the waterline in, put the road in. If there was... In fact, after asking permission of the two adjacent landowners if we were okay with it, we both said, "No, there are no permits. We're not okay with..." To me, that is trespass. When the fence was taken down, it was thrown over to the side, it collapsed part of my fence, and my horse got out. I had to go chase the horse. That's... That's not safe for the animals. Additionally, the map that we were given for today, to me, shows the wrong parcels A, B, and C. It shows three parcels behind my property, and that's not where that trailer's located. Trailer's located, it's been parked over, in fact, right next to the property of... Forget his name. Kevin, which the parcel, to me, should have been the one directly behind 33-13. So, you know, I don't know if it's wrong or not, but it seems to be. I think because of... It looks like inaccuracies, maybe you all should table this and come at it again, and I think it should be done the right way. You don't do things and then ask permission. You get your permits, and then you do your work. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. If you'd like to stay there a moment, I'll see if any of the commissioners have any questions for you.
Okay.
So, do the roll call. Any questions for...
How long has this mobile home been there?
I can't tell you that exactly, but I believe it was...
Years?
Oh, it's been a month or maybe two at the most.
Thank you.
Commissioner Alexander, any questions?
I don't have any questions for the speaker at the moment, but I do have a clarification for staff. And that would be, is Trumpet Way indeed an abandoned roadway? And from what point to what point would that be?
Could you help us?
Yeah. Commissioners, from our understanding, yes, it is an abandoned up into the edge of the subject property's parcel line to the north. It is from our understanding that it's abandoned all the way to that north property line.
Okay. Commissioner Gillette, any questions?
Yes, I do. So, at the time that this road was abandoned, that landlocked this property?
No, because it still had... It still had access. It runs right into the property to the north. The property was since split into the four parcels that you see before you today, and that's what we're rezoning the parcel... This... The four parcels to meet what was split a little while ago. And that would bring this parcel into compliance. Along with that, we put in the conditions that it would have to have legal access to all the parcels. So, when he... When the property was split into the four parcels, those new four parcels did not have legal access. But with the state of Arizona, you can go to the assessor's office and split your parcel without having to go through a rezone. It just would make it not in compliance with zoning. So, now, what this is doing is it would bring the property into compliance with the current zone. One of the conditions that we're placing on the rezone is that they would have to have legal access to all four parcels, and they would have to establish that through a parcel plat.
So, with all the property owners around that property not wanting him to use this road, what do you think his chances are?
I can't... I can't give my opinion on what his chances might be. One of the things that we still need to look at, as well as we've received several opposition from the surrounding property owner, and I believe that we'll require a four-fifths vote from the Board of Supervisors. If more than 20% of the landowners that own more than 20% of the land are in opposition, then the Board of Supervisors would have to have at least a four-fifths vote to approve it. We'll do that calculation after today's meeting and make sure that we know how many have opposed and whether or not it requires that four-fifths vote. The road that... That the Trumpet Way, to answer your question, does... Is a public right-of-way all the way to this parcel? And he would need to extend that through a parcel plat. If he is approved, he would need to extend that onto his property to be able to vest this zoning. If that makes...
So, what you're saying is that he could use this Tower Way up to the edge of his property?
Coming from the north.
Or coming from this way?
Yeah. Right now, I think some of the issues are is that the access is coming from the south, and the property owners on the south aren't giving their condoneses on being able to do that. But it does have access coming from the north. It doesn't look like it's graded, so that would need to be improved. But it does have access to the larger parcel. The four splits would need to receive access through the parcel plat and dedication for a public right-of-way or an easement to those parcels.
So, if he cannot access it... Bottom line, if he cannot access it from the south, he will be able to access... Access this property from the north?
Currently, he can access the larger 40-acre parcel from the north. He can currently do that, but since... But since the splits that he's done, the parcels do not have legal access that he's, he's created those additional parcels. Those ones do not have legal access. And if we were to approve this rezon, our condition is that those would have to receive legal access.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morris, any questions?
Yes, I've got a couple of questions or more comments. The abandonment of the roadway, from the documents that I've looked at, has been, has been accomplished. And half of the right-of-way, thirty feet, goes to either side of the properties. In other words, 3311 got thirty feet, 312 got thirty feet. If, if he concentrated his efforts in creating a roadway on his parcel, which, since it's abandoned, it would be on parcels A, B, and C, and D, that would be within his rights. He can, he can do a private roadway through there. That's, that's just one thing. But if he crossed the line, went onto the abandoned property of 3312, that's another issue. That's trespass, in my opinion. Well, that'll do for now. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Martin, comments?
I agree with the last Commissioner's comment.
Okay. Commissioner Neal?
No.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I'm going to bring up the next Speaker, Nancy Starr. Is she available? I'll call you up after that, sir.
Hello.
Your name and address, please.
Nancy Starr, 9751 El Norte Street, Hackberry 86411.
Thank you.
I've been a landowner there. I neighbor Rodney, that was just up here. And, and I neighbor, I have two forty-acre parcels. The one on El Norte by Rodney, where the abandoned road was set up. I've been there since ninety-one. The road was officially abandoned in approximately ninety-three or four, somewhere in that vicinity, from the previous owner, who was Jim White and Michelle White. He owned one hundred and sixty acres, and that road went right through the center. And he's the one who sold off forty-acre parcels. I also own lot 3310, which is borders on my west side, a quarter mile of the, this rezon request. And I oppose it based on a couple of factors. One is just the impact to the community. Everyone out there thought these were just forty-acre parcels, and it was a rural aspect. And previously, Roger has subdivided multiple areas up there that were not bordering our properties. And, excuse me, there were no building restrictions. A bunch of junk went up, most of which has been abandoned, which is a big eyesore to the, to that area.
If you could just conclude your comments, go ahead.
Okay. Secondly, the abandoned roadway, Eric Seaworth asked me to speak for him. He had to work. You should have a letter from him on the email. And he was trespassed upon. Not only did Rodney's horse get out, but the first time that Roger knocked the fence, that was the second time the fence was knocked down. The first time it was knocked down, my husband and Eric had to reset the corner post and fix the fencing as well. Eric feels very violated on his property, that he's been trespassed upon and bullied. And just the attitude of the whole thing has been with total disregard to the rest of the property owners. So, and my third issue on it is El Norte Street. Roger has it blocked off where people would come in off 66 through his property. Instead, they have to come another mile down, another half-mile of dirt road, and then another, almost a mile going on El Norte, which includes going right past my house. Well, already, people, including Roger, speed by there. I have grandchildren. I have pets. I have horses. It's just not a good situation. And I just foresee more traffic. No one planned on a subdivision going in, in this area. So, those are my three concerns.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from any of our Commissioners on this item?
I have a question, Nancy.
Commissioner Abbott?
The Roger you refer to, is that Chain Land Trust?
Yes. Yes. Roger Chantel is the owner or co-owner of Chain Land, and his son Dustin is part of that.
Thank you.
I'll do a quick roll call. Commissioner Alexander, any question?
No questions.
Commissioner Gillette?
No questions.
Commissioner Morris?
No.
Commissioner Martin?
No questions.
And Commissioner Neal?
No questions.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Sir, would you want to come down? State your name and address, if you would, please.
Roger Chantel, address 10,001 East Highway 66, 86411, Hackberry. I'll make a quick comment on Nancy's on, and, you know, Nancy has had a couple forty-acre parcels, and she got those split down into tens and fives for a while. You know, so, it's kind of discriminatory on it to allow one person to do it, not another person to do it. But that ain't the issue, really. The issue is, is we've had a lot of conversation about the abandonment of the road with county attorney, county surveyor's office, maybe even a few of the Supervisors in relation to that. The person that asked for the abandonment of the road was, what was his name, anyway? But he wound up deeding the forty-acre parcel that Rodney's on. And when he deeded that, he was aware that the county did not transfer the ownership of the road to, from public access to private access on it. And I talked to the county attorney's office, and there's no documents, and according to the state law, that shows that the Supervisors at that time transferred the public right-of-way to private ownership. That all occurred with a map that was drawn by the assessor's office, which was primarily used to charge taxes on that particular right-of-way, which is not an issue either. You know, I mean, it's, more than likely, just happened as an error. But the abandonment was the abandonment of public use of that right-of-way. Because what's called, owned all four parcels, and the Supervisors supported his action in regards to, you know, not having people running between his, all of his property, which is, you know, a valid quest. But then he sold that one forty-acre parcel, which is the one that Rodney owned. And if you look at the deed, the deed supports the subdivision that was approved. And it did not abandon, or it did, he was aware that the land was not given to the public ownership. It was still underneath the state laws of the subdivision. And in regards to me supposedly trespassing, we went on the assumption of that deed, that that was still public land, and that Rodney's parcel shows that in the deed. And also, what we used was the right-of-way for utility access, which Frontier goes around the other way for its telephone, but Mojave Electric has their access poles, or their electric poles on that. And we, El Norte Water and Road Trust, put their lines in that same access easement. And if you have a physical aspect of the property on it, you'll find that Rodney's fence line is on, represents the road that's there. It's on the utility easement line on it. It's not out in the road access. So, everybody acknowledges pretty much the fact that the road easement is still there. And it's needed to maintain Mojave's electric line. It's needing to maintain El Norte's water lines, and it's, you know, for meter readings and things like that. And now UPS is using that road because the road into Kevin's place is not usable enough. So, you know, I mean, it's a valid road for the community, and it's a valid road for people servicing the area, like UPS and FedEx and all the other people on it.
Okay.
Because it does cut down traveling distance.
All right. Thank you, sir.
I guess I'm kicked out. But if you have any other questions on it, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions from any of the Commissioners for the owner? Hearing none. Thank you.
Okay.
Well, now, I'll call for a motion for item number four.
I have a question before a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Absolutely.
This is for staff. From what I got in my packet, and what I've heard today, I'm really very confused. I don't know how to answer on this. Are you comfortable, staff, recommending what you did here? Or is there, should we postpone this and more? As Kathy Taggett used to say, does very well, some tailgate conversations and bring it back to us? So, I'm asking, are you, are you want to go forward with your recommendation still? Or do you want to bring it back to us at a later date after you get more information? Because those people live out there together.
Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioner Abbott, staff based their recommendation on the fact that there are other parcels that are similar in size in the vicinity, and that also that the general plan allows for parcels five acres and larger without having to be amended. So, we based our recommendation off of that information. And that's what we're really deciding on, is the zoning for the parcels. The road right-of-way, it would be a separate issue, except for that if this is approved, like I've mentioned in our conditions, we've stated that each parcel would have to have legal access. And they would have to show that through recordation of a parcel plat. And so, that's the condition that we've put on, on this rezon, that if they, if it does go through, we're okay with the similar lots in the area and the general plan. If it does go through, we want legal access, and they'll need to record that with a parcel plat.
Thank you.
I have a question, Commissioner Martin.
Commissioner Martin, go ahead.
Okay. It seems like we're getting conflicting comments on access. The applicant is stating that the roadway was not abandoned, if I recall correctly what he was saying. And what, the map that we have in front of us says that it was abandoned. Do we have the attorney present that can confirm what actual access is there?
Yes, Chairman Jax and Commissioner Martin, the roadway was, in fact, abandoned by the Resolution Number 94-53. And it states in the first paragraph in the whereas clause that it would be abandoned to the adjoining property owners. Under state statute, when a roadway is abandoned, it, up, the, half the, the right-of-way or the roadway vests in the adjoining property, and the other half vests in the neighboring, adjoining property across the street. Since that was, that's under state statute. Since that was the same owner, the property, at the point of abandonment, the property did vest in the owner of the property, the single owner at that point. You know, it was a split of the roadway. The, as far as the public utility easements and things like that go, that's another issue. What we're talking about here is a county right-of-way, county roadway, which was, in fact, abandoned. At that point, the county divested itself of any interest in that roadway. So, whether or not he can establish some sort of easement, private easement, or maybe work with the utilities or something to acquire whatever interest they have in the easement and proceed that way, you know, that's another issue. But as far as the county's concerned, the roadway was, in fact, abandoned.
So, am I correct in saying that currently he's trespassing?
Well, there's some other private legal issues there. Does he have some sort of an implied easement? You know, that would allow him to go across other people's lands? He's not trespassing on county property.
Thank you.
Director Walsh just showed me on his map that there is public access, and a non-abandoned roadway that goes down to the corner of the property at issue. And I assume that's where we, he would gain access to the split parcels if it were granted.
Any other comments from any of our Commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion. I make a motion that we, that we approve with staff recommendations, in particular, that the parcels have to have legal access.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Commissioner Gillette, and second by Commissioner Abbott. I'll take a roll call here. All in favor? Commissioner Abbott?
Aye.
Commissioner Alexander?
Aye.
Commissioner Gillette?
Aye.
Commissioner Morris?
No.
Commissioner Martin?
No.
I'm sorry. Say it again.
No.
No? Okay. Commissioner Neal?
No.
Commissioner Kelly, I don't believe is on. Commissioner Walker, I don't believe is on. And I vote aye. Four-three. Passes?
Passes according to the vote.
Item, item number four passes four-three. Item number five?
Item number five is an evaluation of a request for a rezon of Assessor's Parcel Number 20311025 from an A general zone and an AR 36A, agricultural residential thirty-six acre minimum lot size zones, to a C2H highway commercial zone for various commercial units in the WikiUp vicinity. Staff recommends approval with standard conditions.
Do we have anyone present representing item number five? Would you like to speak on the item, sir? You'd have to come forward. Give us your name and address, please.
My name is Vasilo Zivkov. The address is 17909 US Highway 93, WikiUp, Arizona.
Okay.
So, essentially, the parcel, we are proposing a commercial development, which is include like a rest area, restaurant, convenience store. We will try to kind of to utilize the location of WikiUp, you know, being like a midpoint between Phoenix and Las Vegas, and try and kind of, kind of, kind of create a, like, not like a, like a team. like, um, not like a, like a theme park, you know, like Wild West theme park where like tourists or like most like, uh, you know, families with, with small kids, they can stop by, they can have like a little bit fun, you know, entertain themselves like for like thirty, forty minutes, you know, have like a, a good meal, and continue their, their way along, along, you know, along the way. But pretty much that's, that's the project in, in essence.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any commissioners have any comments or questions on this particular item? Commissioner Abbott?
No.
Commissioner Alexander?
No questions.
Commissioner Gillette?
No questions.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Morris?
No questions.
Commissioner Martin?
No questions.
Commissioner Neal?
No questions.
And Commissioner Walker? Calling for a motion on item number five.
I'll make a motion to approve for staff recommendation.
Second.
I'll second the motion. Alexander?
Got a, uh, motion by Commissioner Abbott, and a second by Commissioner Gillette. All those in favor, say aye. Commissioner Abbott?
Aye.
Commissioner Alexander?
Aye.
Commissioner Gillette?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly? Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Neal?
Aye.
Passes. Item number six.
Item number six is an evaluation of a request for a rezone of assessor's parcel numbers 25432093 and 094, from an AR 36 agricultural residential 36-acre minimum lot size zone to an AR 10A agricultural residential minimum 10-acre minimum lot size zone to bring into compliance in the Mojave County general area.
Okay. Um, is the applicant, uh, present? I'm, I'm sorry.
He's available by phone.
Applicant is available by phone. Uh, if the commissioners have any questions?
Not yet. I need to dial the menu. I need to pull the person off the phone so that I can get his phone. I need to give me all the background data.
All right. We do have, uh, two individuals wishing to speak on this item. Mr. James Chastain?
My name's James Chastain, address 11730 East Turquoise Road, Kingman, 86401. My concern with this is, uh, we bought out there to live rural, to have no neighbors. The road to get to this property goes through private property, and we have assigned easement to pass through it. It's not a public road. I do all the maintenance on the road with my tractor, my cost, my time. My concern is if this property is split and four homes go in out there, uh, that my job's gonna quadruple to maintain the road. It goes through Crazy Horse, which is all clay. It's a steep hill that, when it gets wet, it's impassable. I've put eighty tons of rock on it this year, spread it. The more people that use the road, the rock disappears because it gets pushed down into the clay. It becomes dusty, impassable when it's wet. Uh, we're pretty much stranded out there for forty-eight hours after a rain. My concern is it's gonna get worse with more people using that road. I understand there's property around us that is private, which I accepted when I bought there. But to split it and have more people out there is something I'm concerned about. Now, whether we could come to an agreement with a cost of maintaining the road, because the county doesn't maintain the road, um, I'm, I'm willing to work with that. I do have a, a, a good piece of equipment to do the work, and I have the time, I'm retired. But if I have to keep spending the money to keep the road up because other people are using it, it's, it's not fair to me. It is private property, and we sign an easement to get, to go through. So that's my concern.
All right, thank you. Um, I'll see if commissioners have any questions for the speaker, Mr. Chastain. Hearing none, thank you. Next speaker is Carrie Chastain.
Carrie Chastain, 11730 East Turquoise Drive, Kingman. I just wanted to address the fact that we bought out there knowing that the parcels were large, and we weren't gonna have very many, um, neighbors. So we, we bought it there needing the peace, um, just to have a peaceful lifestyle, and to break it down to 10-acre, that's gonna add a lot more people. Barking dogs is a, you know, concern of ours. So like, right now, we don't have any close neighbors, and, and it's good for our mental health. Um, and that's, that's the main concern. And then, um, I'm James' wife. He mentioned also about the well, you know, if, if more people put more and more wells, then that's gonna take from ours. So that's my concern.
Okay, thank you very much. Thanks. See if any commissioner has any questions or comments at this time. Do a roll call. Commissioner Abbott?
I have a question for staff, and maybe...
Pat Alexander has left the conference.
There is five acres very close to this already rezoned, and there's fourteen acres. And my question for staff is legal access. I don't see that in your staff requirement. Anything about legal access?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Abbott, the, the parcel currently has, uh, legal access.
Okay. Thank you.
Alexander has joined the conference. No comment.
Commissioner Gillette?
No questions.
Commissioner Kelly, I don't believe is there. Commissioner Morris?
Yes, please. Question, th, these are already split parcels by the APNs that are assigned to it. Is this rezoning, there's probably more to staff's question, zoning to bring those into compliance with, uh, an existing condition so that they can build on each of the lots? Or is it a request of the owner now to retroactively allow the, or obtain the zoning?
This request is in order to bring it to compliance.
Okay. The second question I had, is there legal access to both parcels? I don't see...
Yes, there is.
By easement, or?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any questions, Commissioner Martin?
No questions.
Commissioner Neal?
No questions.
Call for a motion on item six.
I'll make a motion that we accept for staff recommendation based on the fact what is presented to us. The way I see it, we really don't have much to go on, except make a motion to approve it. I can sympathize with you. For almost thirty years, I've maintained dirt roads to get to my place, and properties have gone in, properties have gone in, and some of them helped me out, but the motion is that I make a motion to accept for staff recommendation.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Abbott, a second by Commissioner Gillette. Do a roll call for all those in favor. Commissioner Abbott?
Aye.
Commissioner Alexander?
Aye.
Commissioner Gillette?
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly, I don't believe is there. Commissioner Morris?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Neal?
Aye.
And Commissioner Walker's not there. Motion passes. Item number seven is monthly reports, and they were sent to the commissioners via email yesterday. Any comments or questions? Item eight, commissioners' comments limited to announcements, availability, attendance at conferences and seminars, requests for agenda items.
I have a comment for staff. When are we gonna get this meeting back to somewhat normal? Because I've called in, you can't hear me. I was, I would answer questions, and here you weren't hearing it, so I'd like to request this to get back to normal very, very soon, maybe next month.
Chairman Jax, Commissioner Abbott, I appreciate the sentiment, and, and definitely what we're trying to do is, is hold these meetings and still meet the, the CDC guidelines. Um, I will work with public health and risk to, um, find how to best do that, to, to hold, to have as many commissioners as commissioners here as possible and still provide the, the guy, or still meet the, the recommendations of the CDC guidelines.
I think we've seen on TV recently with protesters, they're not exactly abiding by the six-foot rule. So somewhere, I think we need to... I've said what I have to say.
David Jones has left the conference.
Any other, uh, comments by commissioners?
Uh, Commissioner Martin, I agree with the past comments, and I feel that it should be up to us as individuals if we want to participate physically. Like the last commissioner said, the protests are going on, and nobody's enforcing that.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to add my voice to that as well. Uh, we had the choice to come or not come, and I chose to come because I feel like, as he said, you participate more when you're here.
Okay, uh, moves us to item number nine, call to the public. Do we have any calls to the public out there today? Seeing none, request motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Roger.